Call to orders. Slowly, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boath, here. Mrs. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Farinella.
Here.
Mr. Giannakis.
Here.
Mrs. Miller. Mr. Pender.
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Here.
Mr. Cassio.
Yep.
Mr. Panisi.
Here.
In accordance with the terms of the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, borough clerk's office, police headquarters, the public library, four newspapers and tap into on January 6, 2022. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds, inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices. In pursuant to District Policy 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes' duration, and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic.
Thank you, Alex. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Panisi. I'm going to ask all of our winter athletes if they would please move up to the podium. So if you're here for the winter sports presentation, just may I ask you to wait up by the podium? We want to make sure we get it nice and okay. This evening, we are going to acknowledge the accomplishments of our wonderful winter athletes. The coaches have put together a compilation of videos so that they can share all of the accomplishments of these amazing student athletes. Mr. Estrada, when you're ready?
Good evening. I'd like to thank Dr. Tanze, the Board of Ed, for recognizing our winter athletes and coaches on all the success they've had this year. This past season, we won numerous titles, including four division, one conference, one district, and one state sectional championship. Also, two of our coaches were honored by their colleagues as Coach of the Year. John Greco in boys' basketball and Chris Fish in boys' winter track. Now, let's hear about the winter.
Good evening. I'd like to extend my congratulations to the Lady Tigers bowling team on an outstanding performance during the 2021-2022 season. The girls finished in second place in the Blue Division. We also had four girls that were selected to the All-Blue Division Team. Congratulations to freshman Paige McCauley, sophomore Katie Merritt, senior Samantha Faust, and senior captain Kylie Iraq. Congratulations, girls.
Hi, this is Chris. I'm here to talk to you about the boys' basketball season for 2020 to 2022. We had a great season, and we made a run all the way to the sectional final in Colonia. We lost in a double overtime, but it was an awesome atmosphere for our student body and our players. We appreciate the support of the board members who were there for the three playoff games at home and as many as we could get to the game in Colonia, and from Dr. Lyschek, who was out the game, and all the other administrators who showed up to help. We also want to spend a special thank you out to Coach McCann and Mrs. Wubleski for all the support this season. You are Blue Division Champions. We're in only one game division, so to recognize our letter winners, we have the names Icana Vecchio, Jaden Lloyd, Jack Massif, Michael Mendez, Stephen Mensch, Joseph Adoro, Jalen Russell, Diego Parades. We also have three members of our team that won All-Division or All-Conference awards. Tariq Williams was recognized as All-Blue Division. Anthony Nygu was recognized as All-Blue Division. And Brandon Dean was All-Blue Division and All-Conference. I'll please send a special thank you out to my coaches, Coach Connell and Coach Raffino, and say it was a great season. We hope you guys can all come out next year and help support us to hopefully keep improving. Thank you very much.
Jeff Rizzi, our head coach of boys' basketball.
I got foot. Dead foot.
We just wanted to thank everyone for all of their support this season. The girls had a really good season, finishing with 14 wins, 13 losses. We just want to recognize a few of our student athletes. Brianna Harris and Stella Sweeney were named to the All-GMC White Division Second Team. And junior Sarah McNally was named to the All-GMC White Division First Team.
A very nice year.
Can't wait for next year.
I'd still like to say this quick for the varsity swim team. I would like to say congratulations to the following athletes for making All-White Division: Colin Carey, Nelson Wayland, Raphael Ferreira, Olivia Glenn, Emily Monday, Diego Navarrete, and Katie Zika.
Good evening to the Board of Education, and thank you for inviting us back. And thank you for everything you do for the Winter Track program. The Winter Track had a wonderful year. Both teams bringing home the division title. The boys, for the third time in a row, while the girls went for the quartet four times in a row, they ran absolutely fantastic. And let's have a discussion about the members of that team. First, on the girls' side, we have Saraya Adams, Sephora Bay, Jasmine Burney, Riley Cassio, Eva Chapman, Madison Del Peoli, Juliana Saranella, Ashlyn Lehman, who was All-Blue Division in the 1600-meter run. Isabel Marin, who was All-Blue Division in the high jump or the 400 or the 55. She did everything. We have Julian McConville, Isabel Amont, who was All-Blue Division in the 400-meter and the 4x400 because she ran both and she was fast in both. We have Kstama Parek, Adriana Nazarka, Dia Patel, Angelie Passat, Amaya Rose Brantum, who was All-Blue Division in the high jump and the 55 dash. Madison Schwaba, Sophia Spiesling-Gurt, Trinise Semister, who was All-Blue Division in the 55, and she has some speedy feet. The coaches, of course, were myself, Coach Fish, and Coach Balder, who did a fantastic job with the sprinters and the distance runners this year. I went over to the shot put, which was unusual. On the boys' team, we have Gavin Alessi, Logan Bedeman, who was All-Blue Division in the 1600, then went on to surprise everybody and go to, well, he surprised a lot of the people in our section, when he beat a number of people to finish third in both the 1600 and the 3200 and move on to the groups. We have Jeremy Burrell, who was All-Blue Division, who made it to the meet of champions in the hurdles with Mike Lawrence. We'll come back to Mike Lawrence in a minute. We have Sean Clark, Kyle Cortez, Jason Del Peoli, Chris Downey, Andrew Fallon, who was All-Blue Division in the 800, Jackson Gaffney, who was All-Blue Division in every distance run I think is out there, and most likely the 4x400. He might have been thrown in there every now and then. We have Isaiah Gonzalez, Yashon Johnny, Marshall Johnson, Michael Lawrence, who again was All-Blue Division in the hurdles, was All-County in the hurdles, made it to the meet of champions, and had a great time this year. We have Joshua Hing and Neil Musa, who was All-Blue Division in the shot put, along with John Tan, who was also All-Blue Division in the shot put, and who finished number two in the shot put relay at the GMC relays and did a great job in the state relay. We go down to Patrick Smith, Ethan Temayo, who was All-Blue Division in the 400, Randy Vargas, Adnan Jonathan. And that brings us to the end of our list. But there's a lot more fantastic things that are happening right now in the spring. Hopefully, we get back to you. And again, thank you very much for everything you do for us. We appreciate it. And come on over to Josh Field. Check us out. Thank you very much. Bye.
My name is Steven Johnston. I'm the head coach of the South Plainfield High School Wrestling Team. I'd like to thank Dr. Tanze, the South Plainfield Board of Education, for honoring us and allowing us to have such a tremendous season. The wrestling team finished as GMC Red Division Champions, GMC Conference Champions, District Champions, and were the Central Jersey Group Three sectional champions for the 2021-2022 wrestling season. Eva Altamorano, 132-pound individual NJSI AA Girl State Tournament sixth-place finisher. Manuel Alvarango, Tyler Ballant, 165-pound District Champion, All-Red Division, All-Conference. Daniel Borsos, Adam Bolz, All-Red Division. Jack Campagnia, Nicholas Campagnia, 150-pound GMC Champion, 150-pound District Champion, 150-pound Region Four Champion, 150-pound Individual NJSI AA State Tournament eighth-place finisher, All-Red Division and All-Conference. Vincent Consalina, Jacob Del Vecchio. Jacob was 120-pound District Champion, All-Red Division and All-Conference. Jason Giardano. Jason was the 144-pound GMC Champion, 144-pound District Champion, 144-pound Region Four Champion, 140-pound Individual NJSI AA State Tournament seventh-place finisher, All-Red Division and All-Conference. Daniel Gonzalez Ross, Julian Irazari, Nicholas Irazari. Nicholas was All-Red Division. Jeffrey Jacome, 113-pound GMC Champion, 113-pound District Champion, 113-pound Region Four Champion, and All-Red Division and All-Conference. Andrew Linesky, All-Red Division. Aiden McKenzie. Mark Molinaro, All-Red Division. Mike Zavala. Managers Samantha Culver, Madison Geis, Emma Hoppy, and Nicolette Messara. And the coaches for the 2021-2022 South Plainfield High School Wrestling Team: Head Coach Steven Johnston, assistants John Nye and Shane Raymond, and volunteer coaches Craig Salvatore and Jeremy Nurburgring. Thank you again to Dr. Tanze and the South Plainfield Board of Education for allowing us to have and be honored for our tremendous season. And congratulations to all of our students.
I'd like to thank Mr. McCann for putting the video together along with our coaches. But most of all, I'd like to thank our amazing student athletes. They're so proud. I wanted to share a little story. I, you know, I just thought of it when I, when I heard Coach Greco talk about the, the basketball championship that was held in Colonia. Most of you know I'm from, from Colonia. And the, the gym was absolutely packed, packed with as many people as we could possibly fit in there. Everybody wanted to go to that game. The game was fantastic. But what really stood out is as I walked out of the gym, I passed an awful lot of people that I didn't necessarily know, but they saw me standing with, with the South Plainfield team, and they realized who I was and some knew me. I could not make it out of that gym without administrators, teachers, telling me how amazing our students were, our student athletes, and our students that were in the crowd. And I really think it shows the type of student that we have here in South Plainfield. And it speaks to our parents as well because what I saw that night was absolutely amazing, and it was recognized by the teachers and administration in Colonia. So I'd really like to have one more round of applause for our student athletes and for the parents and guardians. I'm happy to get our student athletes we're going to walk across, and we're going to shake hands with our, with our board members. Again, you're absolutely amazing. Congratulations. 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 I don't know if parents wanted to take some pictures over on the side, so we'll just wait a couple minutes. If anybody wants to take some pictures, we usually do that off the side. Do you want to do a couple of pictures over here? Anybody who wants to get together? We have a second presentation tonight. Mr. Estrada is going to be doing a presentation on our new district website. The website is very user-friendly, and we wanted to introduce it at tonight's board meeting and, and let the public know all of the wonderful things that are now going to be available on the website. And Mr. Estrada will explain the different ways that we can now communicate with you because of this new website. So, Mr. Estrada, when you're ready?
Sure. I'll give the students and families a minute to run if you'd like to do that. Otherwise, good evening to the members of the board and any faculty staff with us tonight, the students and members of the community. Being a prior board member myself and my children's community, one of the most important goals of the board and the school district is to be able to communicate effectively with all the members in the community. Now, in today's mobile environment, people don't really tend to visit websites anymore. So websites are kind of really a thing of the past. Nowadays, people get most of their content pushed directly to their devices, basically your phone, your tablet, and your computer. I'm sure, just like me, most of you get all your updates via social media, Facebook, LinkedIn, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat. And I'm sure you have a bunch of other apps on there that you might use, like Pinterest, Home Depot, your Bangs, things like that. The mass adoption of all of these forms of communication is for one simple reason. They bring the information to you as opposed to you having to go to the site. One of the examples I had was, think about birthday, for instance. Do you even know most of the people's birthdays around you? So is your phone just letting you know that it's that person's birthday today? Then you're like, oh, yeah, should probably reach out. Another one. What about when you're having to get something you order on Amazon all the time, and then you just get an alert, and it pops up in your phone, and you should probably order that? Same thing I did. Nowadays, it's basically very important to utilize those same tools to reach out to all the members of the community. However, managing this many different forms of communication is not only very cumbersome, but very, very time-consuming. We, all these items were on our mind when we decided to look for a new website and alert platform. We needed something that could not only streamline many different forms of communication, such as text, email, social media, the website, but we also needed something that can help us bring the voices of the students to the website as well. After looking at many different vendors, including our existing provider, we chose Thrill Share, a program that's run by a company called Apogee. The things that attracted us specifically to this provider was the ability to cross-post. Now, this means being able to not only post to our website, but also being able to post to multiple forms of social media, email, and text, all from one single location. The ability to add moderated users, which brings the student voices to the site as well, allowing the students to post content, and then allowing the administrator to approve that content, and it's instantly published to all communication platforms. The simplicity of creating posts. The platform is so easy to use that I can really just do it from my phone. There's no need to log into. Well, that's it. Now, one last added feature on top of our new form of communication will be a true district-based app, which will be launched shortly after this site is launched. It will be available on both iOS and Marketplace. This app will allow members of the community to customize the information that they'd like to get from the district websites. For instance, if you're interested in high school events only, you can simply turn on the notifications for the high school, and anytime an event or news article is published to the high school, you'll get simply the high school alert to your phone. Now, I'll show you a little bit of the website. However, just realized it's still going through Chrome pages. It's going to be launched until I first. But I wanted to show you at least some of the ease of publishing and a sneak peek to the homepage. Then I'll be open to any questions you'd like. All right. So here's a platform called Thrill Share. If I go into the live feed section, you'll actually see that we've really been using it for the past month and a half, posting out all of our social media. You just don't realize it's in this one location. But if I want to post something, I can simply just type Facebook, Instagram, live feed. I can do text chats directly to text to speech to go to your phone. We can send out SMS messages. And once the app is launched, you'll be able to do the app from there as well. The person just has to simply type a message. They can upload their picture. And then they can choose the school district or as well, other schools for that content to post at the same time. They can then schedule that post or publish it at that moment. And if you want to look right now in scheduled posts, we actually have the athlete of the week that will be posting it. It comes in. So it just helps to bring everything under one umbrella. Right now, for those who aren't used to having to do all this, getting pictures in, emails in, texts in, having the content, and bring all that content together is very rough. To be able to do it all in one location, it makes everything so much simpler. To take a quick look at the new website, here is the new site. And while the top banner looks pretty much similar, you'll see as we go down, we have all the different buttons to get links from the top. All the district events, which are actually linked to Outlook calendars and are downloadable to any of your phones, so that way you can add the events to your own phones. The news articles, as well as the live feed going on there, and program content about the district. So right now, look up any questions you might have for me. Yes, Mr. West?
I have a question. The new state mandate that the school district websites have to be handicap accessible, does this website also, I mean, the company that does that, does it also have handicap accessibility to it?
Yeah. So you're referring to the new law about ADA compliance? So this one, while it also addresses ADA compliance, one of the things you want to utilize with websites is actually a third party. So we actually do employ a third-party monstero who also double checks that it's ADA compliant. And not only double checks for ADA complacency, but helps to track any complacency changes that we make. That way, we can say, one, we've been looking at it; two, we've been tracking changes; and three, we've been making improvements. No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
No problem.
I can't read. I also wanted to remind our parents and guardians. Unfortunately, we will not be able to offer the free lunch program beginning in, on July 1st. So over the past couple of years, we've been offering free lunch during the, the summer breakfast and lunch program, and also free lunch to our students during the school year. That is no longer available. It expires on June 30th. So I wanted to remind parents, and I will send out three emails over the summer, and we'll do a phone reminder, that parents will now have to make sure that they fill out a free lunch application. It will be right inside our, our Genesis portal for parents. There also is a change where there is no more reduced lunch. So the option is going to be free if you qualify for it or paid. So again, I'm going to remind parents at least three times over the summer and with a reverse 911 because it's very important, especially since our students, many have come to rely on the, the free breakfast and lunch. And I'm, I'm actually very disappointed that that's not going to be offered this, this summer and for the coming school year. And finally, I just wanted to say thank you to all of our students, faculty, and the South Plainfield community who participated in the first South Plainfield Day of Service. It really was a great event. The kickoff softball game was so well-intended. We couldn't have done it without all of you. I have already been asked if we'll be doing it again next year, and the answer to that is yes. The actual Day of Service was also such a wonderful event. Activities were occurring in all of the schools all day long, far too many to mention. I was in each of the schools, watching the students, talking with them. All of the faculty and staff were working on service projects with their students. It really was an amazing sight. And yes, we will also be holding the Day of Service next year. The day was also featured during our last superintendent's roundtable in Middlesex County. And it looks like we will have a number of school districts joining us for our next Day of Service. As a district, we raised over $24,000 for charities. And that doesn't come close to the happiness the service brought to our students as they worked on all of their projects. So thank you again to all of you who attended the softball game, supported the day either monetarily or through your support by participating in the service. South Plainfield is a great community, but I think you already knew that. Thank you. Yes. It, it's, it's, it actually was a federal, it was a federal program. So it's not the district that, that pulled back offering the free lunches, but it is, it's expired through the federal government.
Thank you. Any agenda additions or deletions? Seeing none.
Seeing none, public comments on agenda items opening? Seeing none. Could, we have, do, do have a couple of things we have to vote on. Can I have a motion for personnel 9, 9A, 9D?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
It's mine.
What? It's in the top, the, the, uh, commercial hiring.
Oh, is that where it is?
Right. Commercial hiring. Yeah. It was just listed up on mine, so I said, no.
No, I couldn't.
It could have been 9A, B, or C, but Alex tried to cut me. Okay, uh, any discussion?
I have a question. Um, under the, um, sorry for the orchestra teacher, I'm very glad to see that, um, stipend coming through, does that also include the chamber choir?
That is, that is, we're originally, and after discussing it with the association president, we got, decided to make it, uh, just like choir, which encompasses, choir encompasses a, a bunch of them, and this would encompass the chamber choir. That's what originally was, was going to be chamber choir, and we put it this way to, to match it to the choir. So, yes.
Okay, good, thank you, because I think it's important for the, um, chamber choir to continue, um, after, um, our chamber choir to the left. Um, thank you.
That's all, yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boe?
Yes, on A. I'm standing on B. My wife's part of the unit.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes, stay on B.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes, stay on B.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Finance, 1 and 2, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Public comments on that item? Seeing none, board member comments. Jim?
Uh, well, first, I'd like to congratulate all the athletes and the coaches. This was some, some great developments up there, and it just shows what a great district we have. I'd also like to send out, uh, congratulations to Coach Banzarella. I think he won his 800th game recently, and I know he's now the, he's the winningest coach in New Jersey for softball, right? Which is a nice accolade, I mean, for him. I'd also like to congratulate our competition cheer team. They did not, they fell a half a point short in winning states, but they did have their fourth consecutive undefeated season. So, I do want to say congratulations to them. Twenty-four thousand dollars at that Day of Service is an incredible number. I mean, I remember the Rough Cat was ranked 12th, so that was just fantastic. Incredible amount, really, honestly. I know our attorney's jumped in there, so thank you. It's just a great, great amount of money. And lastly, I just want to congratulate all our eighth graders on being promoted and all our seniors on graduation. It's a big week coming up and Friday, I just wish them all the best. Hopefully that we, we've given them enough of an education to get them to where they need to be and the direction that they're looking for. It's fantastic. It's a fantastic rite of passage, and I just want to say congratulations to them. Hopefully they'll make a difference and change the world for the better. So, congratulations to them and happy summer to all.
Joe?
Thank you. Uh, again, congrats to all the student athletes that we honored tonight and those who participated throughout the year. And I'm also proud that in addition to our excellent academic offerings, our students can excel in, in, at South Plainfield with a wealth of extracurricular opportunities. All these opportunities are to our students at all levels in the schools, in athletics, arts, cultural, and other disciplines. And joining Jim and everyone else, good luck to those students who are graduating from the high school on Friday, and to those students in the middle school, the elementary schools who are moving up and forward in our district. Thank you.
Good. I was just going on pro.
I just want to say, um, I will echo everything that everyone's saying. Twenty-four thousand dollars for all of those charities across the board. I thought Dr. Tanzi was going to say it, but I'm going to say "doing good feels great" one more time.
Wait, well, can we just do it together? Doing good feels great.
Um, that, that sums it up alone. I went to several of the schools and I definitely saw the impact that these students are making. Um, congratulations to all of our students that are moving up and getting promoted to go on to another school. For our high school students, congratulations for our eighth grade students, congratulations as well as the elementary school students. All of our winter athletes, congratulations on a wonderful season, as well as the coaches. Thank you for, um, giving these children, giving these students, um, an experience outside of the classroom to carry on with an athletic perspective of things. And, uh, Mr. Estrada, the website looks incredible and the features that it has to provide, it's, I can't wait. Thank you.
Yes, the Day of Service began with many events, one being the softball charity, um, game. Thank you to our employees, Scott Lickenhouse, Facebook Coach, for announcing and giving the inclusion to all the participants. Thank you to our, um, broadcasting students for taking pictures, and hopefully next year, um, because they take that broadcasting class, they'll be able to do the announcing awesome. Um, the Frozen Two Junior Play was awesome with all the talented acting and singing by our students. Thank you to Mrs. Stacio and the other leaders for showing off the talents of our students. Best wishes to Joe Sorrentino on leading the way for your blood drive. I never had a concern with this since I have done this for many years in conjunction with Maris Wellness and, um, teacher advisor, um, Marla Van Mark, Jessica Kizkowsky, and Tony Encinas, um, and the student nurses. We've had over a hundred teachers and, um, 16-year-old and above students donate to this blood drive. We're hoping to do this again in January or February, um, submitting our facility use program and because there are so many students that do take the time and teachers during the day, um, that this will be able to take place. Also, the district art festival, partnering with the South Plainfield Borough Cultural Arts Commission, was an excellent, um, event, again, displaying the beautiful talented pieces of artwork. Thank you to our art teachers and Shanti Murray for reaching out to me, um, again, partnering with the, um, cultural arts program and benefiting, um, Friends of Art. As a member of the Board of Ed, um, it's my responsibility to review any type of action to be taken on our agenda, to read, review, and research all pertinent information which includes actions by viewing files on people that are on the agenda. So, thank you. I am very excited to see again the orchestra position, which includes the chamber choir, and the SPHS Music Booster Dinner was held in, um, in Wesson Venue. Thank you to Jay McKenon and his committee. Also, congratulations to our executive director for our New Jersey School Boards, um, Dr. Lawrence Feinsod, on your retirement, and welcome Dr. Tim Pernell, um, who will take the reins. Thank you to our senior class advisors for the senior class signs, they look amazing. Um, I know that they had trouble, I guess, um, trying to get those signs printed, and thank you to Lisa Manns for saving the day from your printer that you work for. Thank you to all those participated in the scholarship program. Thank you to Sam Vieira, Shanti Murray, and especially to Terry Peligi, who went above and beyond to lead the ship, and to Kathy Riley. Great job at the SPHS Athletic Booster Club Awards, a fun evening, and to, congratulations to all our athletes. I'm happy Juneteenth, the Day of Slavery ended, a lifetime of celebration, and thank you to Queen Nor for your life lessons, stories. Also, thank you to Rodney School for hosting Stomping Out Cancer once again. We did the 39-minute walk, and the chant that the students all the way down to pre-K give, um, is amazing to watch. So, thank you to Christine Disbonzieri, to the principal, and all those involved in setting that up. And Dr. Lyshe, you were there also, so thank him.
Good. Gee? I'm just working on that.
Alright, uh, this weekend, we sent, uh, 14 athletes down to TCNJ for Special Olympics Track and Field. Uh, they came home with 12 gold, six bronze, and five, or, six silver and five bronze medals. And happy, uh, Coach Linus and Coach Hearn, 10 years of coaching these young individuals, and it's been a great, great run with them, so, thank you.
We're here at graduation, and I think that, uh, in addition to all the remarks that you've all heard, I think that it would be, is very fitting to say thank you to every single person who had a hand in, in, in making that happen, whether it's parents, whether it's our administrative assistants, whether it's our building ground folks, our, our tech folks, uh, our high school principal who's back there, Mr. Casio who runs Tiger TV, our, our superintendent, and everyone who sits on this board. It's not an accident that we've, we've converged on graduation, and I also want to say thanks to our parents and all the other supporters in our community. It's because of all of you that we're here tonight to say congratulations to this class, and, uh, thanks very much.
Well said, John.
Well, it's a lot to follow.
I've heard attorney too.
Again, congratulations, college coordinators, the athletes, graduates, I'm not going to reiterate and be redundant, but, uh, a couple things I want to, I want to remark to what Ms. Boyle said. First of all, the Day of Service, um, that was a great event. I mean, Dr. Lyshe, you incorporated staff, students, towns, dignitaries, laypeople. I mean, we all were involved in, 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 in this event, and it was a great event. The softball, uh, charity fundraiser, how you ran it was, was to perfection. I, I, not enough, good things to hear from people that were, that didn't really want to go, had a lot of first response, like, ah, I had to go to this thing. They had a fantastic time. People that were announcing the, the, the game, uh, people that were involved in, in cheering, the people who were now involved in your, your racing, I mean, it was just a great event encompassing everybody, and, and who else than that. Number two, um, regards to the, the blood drive, that's upcoming. I understand there's concerns of safety and security, and I know that you've been working hard with, uh, Chief Parker, uh, security, security. You know, this, this blood drive and any other events that are going on in our district from now, you know, from when that incident occurred, um, in, in Texas, to the end of the square, there's great concerns of safety and security. So, we're, uh, very aware of what's going on, and the protocols we're putting in place are for the benefit of the children and the staff. So, it's not personal. Uh, we want to make sure that everybody is safe, and I know that Dr. Lyshe is working this week, actually, to try and get the voting out of our schools. We're petitioning the county, uh, and, and the town to find alternate locations moving forward because this is a concern of ours. We don't feel that it's proper to have strangers coming into our schools when children are there for presence, so I know Dr. Lyshe is working on that, and, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. That's along with, that's along with our clerk, uh, and, and also, Mr. Collins.
Correct, correct, you know, so I know you're working on it. So, I just want to clarify that, you know, what's going on and how we run things around here. So, again, moving forward, thank you, everyone, and have a great summer.
Good. Second question. Okay. Thank you. Um, again, I'm going to talk about the same things a little bit, might just be a little unnecessary, you know, the Day of Service was tremendous, you know. I made it, I think, every school to see what was going on. It was great, the softball game was great, the announcers, you know, Mr. Lickenhouse and Mr. Chapman, it was, as they were praised, it was pretty good. And our, our student, uh, uh, techs who are on the sideline with their mics, taking interviews and everything, that was tremendous. It was a fun time, and, and the amount of money raised and bringing everybody together. You know, I was able to do a walk with Mr. Tafaro, who I've known for many, many years, and, and he just couldn't say enough things about this town and, and the students and everything, so it was tremendous, and I commend, I commend Dr. Dr. Tanzi, you know, for, for getting this going, and I commend, though, everybody else also who jumped on board and helped out. I want to congratulate the athletes, the coaches, you know, it's nice to see this and hopefully next year we get them in and we do it like we used to do and have the, set it on a screen, we get the athletes here. And, uh, you know, it's one step closer to be totally normal, which is always exciting. And eighth grade and, and, uh, high school graduation, you know, they become big events. Again, as, as Mr. Farinella mentioned, that, you know, there's a lot of people involved to help that, to get these students, and, and we're, you know, we're proud of what, what they've accomplished, and we're, we're looking forward to it, see what they accomplish in the future also. And the staff, you know, tremendous, this is our last meeting, I mean, next week's meeting, the school's closed already, so I just want to make sure now to, to thank the staff, um, for all year. I mean, it's been rough two or three years, and, and, you know, and it is very difficult. I always say, you know, it's amazing how they can do it, I don't think I could have done it if I was back in the classroom. So, we have a great staff, we really do, we have great administration, great students, and, uh, you know, there's always some bumps, and it's always going to happen, but they did a good job, great job. And just, uh, the one thing about the, the, I just want to correct myself for, for three steps, because that, it was, it's the chamber orchestra that we were doing, and the chamber choir is already in the group with the choir, so that's why we made it orchestra to cover the chamber orchestra. Yeah, I don't, I think I said choir, and you mentioned choir, and then I said, I hope I didn't mislead on it, so I didn't mislead on it. That's, that's late. Last thing, any other comments? Good. Very good. At this time, uh, we need to go into executive session, resolve pursuant to open public meeting act, the, the board meets in closed session at this time to discuss confidential matters pertaining to personnel, matters of attorney, court, privilege, and negotiations. We will be coming out to approve the agenda, that would be the only action done in the closing meeting. So, have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
I'm fine.
opposed? Okay, we're excited. Thank you.
Hi. Mr. Farinella?
Here.
Mr. Giannakis?
Here.
Mr. Pender?
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Here.
Mr. Casio?
Here.
Mr. Panisi?
Here. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes, motion adjourned.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? And he's adjourned, see you guys next week or tomorrow and Friday.
That's right.